I think it's time, I'd like to call this the season of order. My first order of business would be what the leaders. I'd like to lead this through the light of the United States of America and through the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all. And for business, I'd like to swear in our due, uh, Jennifer Laymeyer, myself, the councilman, and Todd. I, Benis Way, Jonathan Khome.
Jennifer Laymeyer.
You solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, Constitution of the State of Minnesota, that will faithfully and marginally discharge the duties of my office, councilmember for the city of Rainier, the county of Coochit, which I, and then I.
To the best of my ability.
Do all we got. On that, all the way, I'd like to approve the agenda for tonight.
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda tonight.
Second. We have a recommendation, is that in all favor?
Aye.
Both? So carry. Everybody have a chance to read the minutes of the December 15th council meeting? Any corrections?
Recommend the tour.
All second. We have a recommendation, is that in all favor?
Aye.
Both? So carry. I recommend approving the minutes of the December 15th, 2020, Coochit Taxation Meeting.
Motion to approve.
All second.
We have a motion in second, all favor?
Aye.
All favor?
Aye.
Both? So carry. Review the listed claims for December 2020. Everybody have a chance to look at them?
They're going to approve. All second.
We have a recommendation, is that in all favor?
Aye.
Both? So carry. Review the accounts balance and the financial statements for the general water sewer busts.
Motion to adjourn.
All second that one. We have a recommendation, is that in all favor?
Aye.
Both? So carry. I recommend designation of the city attorney of Freiburger, Buchanan, Smith, and Curry.
I'll make a recommendation to the designation of the city attorney of Freiburger, Buchanan, Smith, and Curry.
Second. We have a recommendation, is that in all favor?
Aye.
Both? So carry. To make the designation of the International Hall of Journal as the official newspaper of the city.
I'll recommend the designation of official city newspaper, the International Hall of Journal.
All second.
We have a second. All favor?
Aye.
Both? So carry. Recommend the designation of the Oz Garden, Department of Bank and Border State Fairing.
Recommend the tour.
All second. The recommendation is second, all favor?
Aye.
Both? So carry. To recommend selection of the mayor pro temp, I recommend Todd Khome.
Second.
We have a recommendation, is that in the second, all favor?
Aye.
Both? So carry. To recommend 2021 appointments for various committees, I'll put a read demo now, second here. Committee, all council members, I don't think we have to approve these, unless there's opposition or something, just do a blanket. All council members for the committee of all, North Coochit Sanitation District, is John Bruckman present?
No. He could not come.
Okay. I don't know, I have myself double as the alternate. I'd like to recommend him, and should he not accept it, we could change that at the council meeting a week from now.
I will recommend that.
Second. We have a recommendation, is that in all favor?
Aye.
Both? So carry. Coochit County Development Association, KCDA, I recommend myself to handle that one.
All second that.
We have a recommendation, is that in all favor?
Aye.
Both? So carry. Voyager National Park, Cheryl?
Let. Recommend Cheryl.
Recommend.
All second. The recommendation, second, all favor?
Aye.
Both? So carry. Rainier Land Use Planning Commission. Well, you're pretty familiar with that, I'd like to recommend you, I see we have Joanne, Mark Dunbar, I'd like to see that you sit on that.
I was just on.
You can't be on it again?
I was just on. It's only been a year since I've been on, I was on for seven years.
And you don't want to be on it again?
No, sir.
Alright, then Joanne's behind you. Joanne? Are you up to it?
I am.
You get a lot of questions, alright.
I'll recommend Joanne that.
All second.
Okay. We have a recommendation, is that in all favor?
Aye.
You did find job over, that's why I keep it that way.
Okay, sir.
Probably pay wasn't enough, right? Alright, moving on. Convention and visitor bureau, Joanna, again?
Yep.
I'll make the recommendation.
We have a recommendation, is that in all favor?
Aye.
Voyage Forward, Cheryl Agathrow. I'll make that recommendation.
Second.
Is second, all favor?
Aye.
Both? So carry. St. Harper Transcendence Dock, we've got Todd Khome, Ron Wilbur, Ron Wilcox, Cheryl. All three. And the.
I would like to ask Jen, would you be interested?
I would love to.
Okay, then I can back off and let her answer.
I'm sorry, you'd rather.
Yeah, I'm gonna take over the spot. I'd like to nominate Jen, might as well.
So Todd Khome. Cheryl. And Jen. Get a recommendation.
All second that.
We get a recommendation, is that.
I'll recommend that.
Second. We get a recommendation, is that in all favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both? Coochatir Mitigation Committee. Ron Wilcox and Cheryl.
Yes.
I will recommend that.
All second.
All favor?
Aye.
Both? So carry. So everybody's got their committees, I think we all understand who they are, we'll go check each other out next weekend and make a final recommendation on that.
Have you heard anything, are they gonna be doing a COVID terrorist movie again? Have you heard since?
The only thing I've heard is the county is starting to work on what they have with that, you know.
Well, I heard they're supposed to get another chunk of change for distribution.
Right, and they're just now trying to get ready to start, you know, to figure that out, so. Like, I shouldn't know something by next week.
Do you think that we should just put that in, just in case?
Okay.
That would be the mayor and myself again? When we call it COVID. This way, Sharon. The county COVID care.
Right. How we did it last year for?
Okay. I'll recommend Mayor Dennis Way, Mayor Paulson, Ron Wilcox. We have a recommendation, is that.
All second.
Both? Or all favor?
Aye.
Both? So carry. The League of Minnesota Liability Waiver, you all have a chance to read that, look it over. Any issues here? Cheryl, you read it, you know the other one by heart, any issues with it at all?
Say that again?
On the League of Minnesota Liability Coverage waiver.
We usually vote not to waive the statutory limits and keep with the $500,000, because we don't feel we have exposure that's gonna be over that $500,000.
We need to make a recommendation.
Recommend it, yes.
That we don't waiver.
That we don't waiver, yes.
I'll make that recommendation, that we don't waiver.
The recommendation is second, all favor?
Aye.
Both? So carry. Minnesota, here you go, have a chance to look at the Minnesota relief funding information. You guys got any questions on it?
So basically, there's the two separate programs. Minnesota Department of Revenue has got the one program where if the businesses have seen a 30% reduction in revenue from Q2 to Q3 of 2020 compared to 2019, then they could be issued a one-time payment. And if we qualify for this, it's still kind of up in the air, if they're gonna let municipal stores qualify for it, but if they did, then we would get a $15,000 payment, because we have seen a 57% reduction in revenue. If we don't qualify for that, or even if we do, we're definitely gonna be, we will qualify for the county fund, which is to make grants again to individual businesses. The county received $256,000. And they, I think the county just met in their first board meeting today, and I'm not exactly sure, you know, what they talked about, but I'll keep in touch with Jenny to make sure we know what's going on with that.
The way that, I believe the way it states, would the liquor store also be able to be involved with less than 50% of loss, just even though it's owned by the city?
I mean, there's questions out there about it, but on its face, it doesn't exclude it, so I, you know.
From what I've read, it sounds like we should fill out anyway, they can tell us if we can't have it or not.
Well, the way that one works is the Department of Revenue was just gonna issue these checks to whoever they said qualified, like, you know, service, you know, whoever, service manager could have, but I haven't seen a check come through yet. Excuse me, I know it's early yet, so anyway, it's still kind of up in the air, but we should qualify for one or both of the programs, anyway. We got lots of people watching out for us, so we've got our consultants and the MMBA and the MLBA and all that, so definitely keep on top of it.
I see there's quite a list of some of the things that some of the businesses here were qualified for, and they'll email in and check some of them, if, so that's good, I'm sure it'll help them. Moving on, the next statement was the COVID-19 statistics update, you can get provided on that.
Yeah, that's just for your record.
Apparently the tests they take, county can get more than one test, we got more tests, we got people. It's so quickly you can take more than one test.
Oh yeah, I've had to go to a. I'd agree, I'm gonna go get a fork on here. That's why my nose gets a lot of ramen.
Ramen stuff up? Pick one of your ramen. Well, that's good that just COVID looks, well, two-thirds of county has been tested, so, yeah, that's pretty good. They don't say the number of cases, but at least we got to test.
Their pages are in there somewhere.
Yeah, they say, like, what ones are currently in isolation versus, like, docked.
It's like 570, so, yeah, that's probably.
Well, certainly it's, uh, it looks like it's out of the downtrend a little bit, at least in this county. Moving on, the liquor store statement, Jen? For December? Pretty tough ones, but nothing going on, right?
Well.
Where did they, where did you put the, on the line that says the store on the income statement, that's $8,000, did that include, was that your off sale, that you're selling baskets, or was that just clothing?
No, that, that's baskets.
You put the baskets, there's some contractors, but.
Yes, yes.
That was a great promotion there. You did about $7,000, well, for the less than $7,000 more in store this year, so these are something to keep a global.
Right, and it's, you know, something we can consider next year too, just maybe, like, pre-orders, call ahead, we can do it up, obviously can't display them in far as that limit, but. Yeah, that was, I thought maybe 10, 20 baskets would sell, and I definitely lost count over 60, so I don't remember what the count was on the baskets, so.
And what's the miscellaneous non-tax? Because it's like, 4,500 is last year, it's 1,100, so is that something else?
Miscellaneous non-tax would be clothing.
Okay, so that's the clothing.
Yeah. Yeah, because we brought in, the first batch of hats went out in 24 hours, so then we did a quick order on those again.
So there again, that was a good thing for Christmas.
Yeah, great stocking stuffer, you know, and then the hoodies, that was probably about two grand right there, so.
Well, the end of year date isn't all bad.
Considering.
It's not negative.
Yeah.
13,469,69, that's pretty good.
Yeah, and we couldn't even begin on sale till December 20th, so.
Hopefully, hopefully we get back to normal here soon, six months from now, I don't know. I guess we'll just keep doing, try to do different things, keep putting that clothing, I guess. Valentine's Day, maybe put baskets again.
Well, that's what I'm thinking, you know, Valentine's, Mother's Day, something like that, we'll figure out different holidays and stuff.
Otherwise, if chocolate is always a good part.
Right, if it doesn't want one of those.
Your hand's retired, it's still looking pretty good. I would make a recommendation, we approve the liquor store operating state.
All second. We have a recommendation, is that in all favor?
Aye.
Both? So carry. Hey Jen, what do you have planned for, any plan for this month at all?
Not right now, because I'm not quite sure what the governor's gonna do next. I'm just happy it's day two, people are allowed back in, you know, everyone's being really careful about it, they're following the rules, that's all we can ask for, and everyone else around the state can do that, you know, it would make a big difference to keep bars open right now, so.
And to keep the fire going, that's what happens.
We are gonna keep the fire going, we got lots of wood there, if anything, huge shout out to the community for donating majority of the wood to, you know, keep the fire pit going. We'll just kind of see what the next stages are, and if the cases actually stay down, then we can really consider trying to get a few more people in, you know, and try to do a small event with social distancing required. See where we go from there. It's been tough trying to figure out ways to, you know, keep the bar running at a safe, you know, matter.
Well, you're doing good, Jen.
Aye. You can only do what you have to do.
At what time you guys close at night then?
Executive order says 10 o'clock, so.
Jenny, I'll forget what you're gonna give, we had the first one on the rack, um.
Oh, thank you. So I think once we get through this, we're supposed to have a polar vortex come through, and I think once that's over with, I would love to bring Bober out of retirement and maybe do a wiener roast out back, put some money towards the rackla. I think it'd be great, everyone could be outside, because social distance, you know, also to keep over the rackla. Even if we just get a ton of sticks, we can boom right over the fire pit too, and we could get a couple of them and get the grill out.
Yep.
I think it'd be fun.
Great.
Good idea.
And Mayor, the one thing that I put on everybody's, in front of everybody, was just kind of the timeline of all the things that happened this year, when it was open, when it had closed, when it got open, 50%, 25%, off sale, on sale, of our guys, and Jen and I had gone through it earlier, I might have, hope I've got the dates right, but it doesn't matter if the dates are right or not, it's just sort of a timeline of the wonderful year.
But we survived it.
Yes.
Sorry, anything else for Jen?
I see on that, on that next line, it's a 2019, 2019 report from the Minnesota stores, and it looks like Rainier once again held its own against the state. Yep. Sure did, so that was good.
Yep, so Rainier, for 2019, right, 16th in the net profit percentage of, net profit ratio out of 182 municipal liquor stores, which is, which is really good. So that, I mean, that shows that our net profit ratio is competitive with the rest of the state, because, I mean, those are the numbers that they look at, if you start looking at pro sales, you know, we're never gonna compete, but the profit ratio is good.
Then you look at the net profit and loss, and we're at 12.4%, and a lot of them are negative, and not all of them put any money down on the bottom line either.
Right.
That's a good one. And then, do I read this right, we're rated number one in the smaller cities?
And they, they separate it out by districts.
Right.
So in this, in this Arrowhead district, yes. So that, and that's, again, goes with the profit, profit, net profit percentage, so. So that's good.
That'll be with your court.
Next year, somebody's reports are kind of horrible, so.
Nick, what do you have? So you guys, consider the pro rating of the, of the liquor license.
Oh, yes.
What's that?
Yeah, the one that's highlighted there. Consider the pro rating of all the liquor licenses in town here. I got a question on that, Cheryl. That really wouldn't affect our budget much, would it?
It really wouldn't, I mean, it's, so it's, what Looney's pays is $1,200 a year for their liquor license and their Sunday on sale.
What are we gonna pro rate it as, number one?
Well, so that would basically be a hundred bucks a month, right?
Right.
And then, the cocktail room and on sale license for cantalaburs, you know, pretty minimal, it's $400 a year, so, you know, I don't know, I just feel like if you guys wanna give some sort of relief, well, they're, you know, they're not able to function, you know, at full capacity.
I had a long table that, think about it, over the weekend and everything, and time voted.
Just a little food for thought on that, I see, Jen, you were down to 75% in, basically 75% profit.
Right.
So we reduced the pro rate it down to the license to 25% of what we were charging before corresponded to.
But that was, that was, we couldn't sell on sale from November to January.
I can't believe.
Like, from November to January, the 75% loss was, a lot of it is on sale, you know.
Well, you're, on a year-to-year basis, on a year basis, you're down.
Right.
A little around 75%, so we just use that same for, and you might recommend.
Like you said, I just can't wait to be able to. Think about it, put some numbers to it. I think we need to do something, because I don't think it's gonna affect our budget that much.
Not our budget, whatever you look at.
Well, I was thinking, yeah, more of their budget than ours.
Let us have figured out by the next week, Jen.
Make your recommendation, have you reconsidered this?
Thank you.
All second.
All favor?
Aye.
Both? So carry.
Thanks.
Nick, what do you got going on?
No water breaks, no, any issues?
We need some cold weather and some snow.
We're still beginning to snow, I heard.
I hope so. We need some, we need some snow before we get cold, or we're gonna have water breaks.
You know, the frost hasn't been penetrating that much, so.
Oh, ain't bad.
The weather, you know, the two, so, yeah, we've been really fortunate, so. Any outstanding issues that you see? No frozen sewers, no, no cowl issues, skating rinks going fine, it's really, really well attended, every time I go there, there's 40, 50 kids.
It's been busy, really busy. You know, with both the rings, considering the, the weather.
Is the ice enough with this weather or not?
The one corner where the sun hits that glass a little bit, it melted today a little bit, but nothing we can fix up once it cools off.
I know, it's been busy.
Yeah, it's been super busy.
What about the sign, you can get the lights fixed on the sign here?
No, he was gonna get back to me on a date, he can do it, because he's gotta get a lift. He was gonna round up a lift, I guess, for the lights.
Is this for the main Rainier sign?
Yeah, the big one out there. The only thing we can do is call Roach and rent his.
I seen an interesting, interesting thing this weekend, it was just on social media, which I got a text on, I see Warwood and someplace else in Minnesota, they have what they call Skate Woods.
I saw that.
I see that, and I quickly Googled it, right here, got an overall picture, we possibly could do something like, this winter's been ideal for something like that, we could possibly do something like that, pretty easy, just off the end of the skating rink, goes up in that pond of the, it's on our property and everything, and you see the one that's got like the figure eight.
Yep.
And just a fire pits out there, so, I suppose, it is a cute little thing, thoughts for next year, maybe, but.
Yeah, absolutely.
I don't think it'd be too hard, with the proximity to the rink, you already, you know, you already hit the rink once, I mean, it is, I can't be more than 100 feet from the rink, I'm not even at.
Not even at.
So, you know, you could do something like that, so, we'll think about that over the course of the year, maybe.
Absolutely.
Do something like that.
Yep.
Got a lot of things right now.
Yep.
Anything else of all your equipment, everything, no issues with equipment, everything?
Nope, everything's been going good, pickup's been going through some resistors, and we had a blower motor go out.
Okay. Well, if you got any questions for?
No.
Good, thanks, Dave.
Dave, thanks.
A letter from City Beach. I assume you all saw the email I sent out.
Oh, yeah.
I've been kind of on this, talking with neighbors about, I think City Beach is kind of ugly right now, it used to be a lot better looking, I remember, 30 years ago. I think the fence is unnecessary, and I think it's not attractive if you, then after I took a walk out there here this summer, I realized it's infested with buckthorn, and that's a, that's a whole nother issue. So anyway, I just was going to ask for your support, you know, it's not like you have any jurisdiction there, but it should be dealt with, I'd sure like to see it beautified, get rid of the fence, when I talked to the mayor, Harley Droba, he did indicate they'd been brought out once before, he was concerned with security. I think that's a weak argument, they've been using the.
Other side.
West side on the creek for years, and really, I think that's a safe thing to do, because you've got a big arc light there, and that's kind of a beacon coming off the lake, before you head down river, you know, so I don't think that's a very good argument, I don't think they gave it much attention. So I just think supporting an effort to clean up City Beach, remove the fence, and deal with the buckthorn, and I sent them a separate email later, a little more stronger language, because as the biggest landowner in that area, the city of International Falls should shed an example, and get rid of the buckthorn, if nothing else. I talked to Jolene and Jim, they put on the seminar, or the workshop here last year, I attended it, and I went and got a little, you know, almost bottle of that chemical, it's a very strong chemical, I had a sign for it. And anything under an inch, you just clip it off and you dab it, and it kills it, and anything bigger than that, they've got a tool, you can lures it out of the ground. And anything bigger than that, they've got a tool, you can lures it out of the ground, and you take it all and you burn it. And anything bigger than that, you take a chainsaw to it, and, uh, it can be dealt with, but I didn't realize how thick it was. I went and worked on Mary Ann's cabins behind the liquor store, and I took out two pickup loads in just a small area of her property, and I was amazed how thin out it looked. It looked really great, because, uh, buckthorns, uh, it's a big deal, it's pretty invasive. Anyway, that's two separate things, but I'm simply, um, asking to see what you think about my idea to, uh, approach to the Falls Council. I could use, we could use some support, and in hers, and to clean it up a bit. Uh, as far as the buckthorn and the city of International Falls, uh, I've had a couple of conversations, they're a little frustrated. They've approached the city several times to do something, they won't even have a workshop like we did here, like you did, those. And, um, they can't get the word out, so I did encourage them to contact, um, oh, either Laurel or Emily Getty, the reporter at the Journal, and get the word out, that it's gotta be dealt with, and it's, there are hedges in International Falls that are all buckthorn, people don't even know it, but it's all over the place.
All from down the bike trail, too.
Yeah.
Bike trails, basically, that.
So, um, as far as Rainier, um, I think we've kind of done our part, but he did indicate that, you know, they were talking about putting a day aside, probably before the leaves are on the branches, and they could have, um, you're the guy, uh, sorry, I haven't met you yet, in half hour, they could teach him how to identify the plant. He could run around town and mark a bunch of areas, they would come with, too, and mark, especially the, sometimes you don't recognize the trees. And a couple hours of that, it's all over, yeah. And then if you get some volunteers, in a half a day, you could do a lot of damage, many, many pickup loads to the, to the local dump here, burn up. So I, so it's kind of two different things, I really got going on the fence, and I, a lot of the neighbors and I think it's, uh, could be looking a lot better from the curb appeal aspect of it. Nick, are you familiar with buckthorn? Yeah, I think that we kind of addressed that in a meeting about three, four months ago, when we had that, that we wanna take any action we can for any invasion. Yeah, he did indicate that. So we're in favor of that, you know, um, Wayne, did you say you would go to approach the city council? Or you wanted us to approach the city council, see if they could do something about that? I'd rather approach, and I sent the mayor and the city administrator a letter. What we can do, we're gonna schedule a meeting to discuss several issues with the city here, and, uh, we'll bring that, that subject up also at the.
Yeah, I agree that it can definitely look better, it's kind of a waste of real estate that we could do.
I'm not hearing, I'm hard of hearing with these masks, I can barely hear you, but, that's all right. Tough to breathe lips that way, too. Yeah. Works good at home.
We need, we need to make a meeting with the Falls, anyway, I mean.
Well, we do, we do have a, a meeting scheduled for International Falls, or we are gonna schedule one with International Falls, and we will bring that up at, at the Falls, 'cause I, I agree with you. You know, there's several things I contacted, the, the city actually are pretty receptive, they come out, when I talked to the maintenance manager, and he came out and helped us on some of the ditching, uh, he had a, by the, by the bridge, our, our people have done it to the bridge, and I thought if they did their side up to the bridge, it would really help. I asked the county for it, and they, they did not respond, but then the city come and responded, and they moved right up to the creek, they both side, on one side of the bridge, and we do the other side, and you can just see the difference in that, you know, when you do that, it just makes things look a little better, so. Uh, you know, the maintenance man has been, uh, pretty receptive to suggestions, so. Jolene and Jim also mentioned that, but, again, we'll make that suggestion. Sure. Thank you, you know, I appreciate taking, uh, uh, taking time, going out, looking at the whole community like that, see what you can do, because we all do a little for them. It all takes. Add up to a lot of things, and I think everybody can take care of their lawns, keep them clean and neat, trash, and everything else like that, so I'm glad that we're in the community spirit here, Wayne. Julian also mentioned there's organizations, if you could write grants, this organization that did this bog walk, uh, that was through the ski club, I believe. Yeah, the ski club did it, we assisted on that, we got some money. Yeah, and that was, I mean, it's a wonderful thing, so things can happen, so. There's nothing like a community spirit to get things done, you take a little pride in it, you take pride in that, you take pride in this. And I have to admit, with the story of those, I'm tired of reading, and I can't drink anymore, so I gotta do something. Okay, I'll let you on with your business.
All right.
Thank you, Wayne.
Thanks, Wayne.
Appreciate it. Uh, let's move. Well, that's the last order of business for the night, so we open it up as, as the, uh, the open forum, yes.
We just wanted to give a shout-out, thank you to the city's most red clubs for the work down on the break. I spent down there with my niece a couple of times with this nice weather, it's just a wonderful little spot for the community. I know we put a lot into it, and it's very nice for you, David, thank you.
Boy, the other thing, if you hadn't noticed, uh, in the Falls paper, the reconstruction project is advertised, FBI bids, and, uh, it's advertised for bids, so a couple, three weeks, I think, uh, this project is gonna, yeah, so we'll know the, you know, basically the budget and cost of it anyway, so, we'll have a bid, so, within a couple of weeks, we'll know all that falls within our budget, or within the county budget. I expect to see favorable bids this time of year, we usually get some pretty good bids, the first jobs are pretty, pretty good, so. We'll know shortly, so we're moving ahead to that project. I'd like to welcome Jennifer Daymire to the conference.
Tomorrow at 5:30.
Why, you ready?
Yeah.
Well, has there anybody else got anything?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Then I'd like to get a recommendation to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. We got a motion to, second in all favor?
Aye.
Thank you.